Good evening, welcome to the Falls Township Board of Supervisors meeting Monday or Tuesday, December 19th. We'll begin with a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Galloway, can you pull the board?
Aaron Mullen.
Here.
John Palmer.
Here.
Jeff Boraski. Jeff Dance.
Here.
Of course, I am here.
All right, let the record show Mr. Boraski has a prior commitment. Item number one is public comment. Ricardo Figueroa is the only name on the list. Oh, you're here for an agenda item?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, thank you. What are we doing with item number two?
Mr. Dance, speaking to the applicant's attorney in advance of tonight's hearing, they are going to request that this item be tabled for this evening, and I believe they're granting all the appropriate extensions under the municipality's planning code for the township to review some zoning issues.
That is correct. Good evening, Board. Bryce McGuigan here on behalf of Mike McGinnis from Begley Carlin. Mike apologizes that his schedule cannot allow him to be here tonight. After talking with the solicitor, again, we're requesting a brief tabling of this matter until January to allow myself and Ms. Gallagher to discuss some of the potential, I guess, zoning issues that may have arisen. And we don't think there are anything significant, and we don't think it should overly delay things. However, best to just give it a month, look into it, and then we'll hopefully be back before you in January to tidy things up. And obviously, to the extent that the township requires any, the waiver of any guidelines or timelines within which to decide this application and to render a decision, fully granted.
All right, so we'll ask for a motion to table.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Have a Merry Christmas, everyone.
You too.
Item three, consideration of adopting the 2024 budget and resolution establishing the mileage rate for 2024.
Good evening. Tonight, the board's being asked to adopt the budget that was presented and advertised for the last 20 days at the township building and the public libraries.
Okay, any questions or comments from board members?
None.
None?
No comments.
Professionals are good. Any public comment needed? There's no hands. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second to pass the budget. Mr. Galloway, can you pull the board?
Yes. Aaron Mullen.
Yes.
John Palmer.
Yes.
Jeff Dance.
Yes.
I vote yes.
Thank you.
Item number four has been removed from the agenda. This is item number five. Consideration of adopting ordinance of the Township of Falls, Bucks County, Pennsylvania, amending Chapter 198 taxation by adding Article 7 Volunteer Service Tax Credit, Section 62 to 67, repealing all inconsistent ordinances and establishing a date thereof. This is basically a tax credit for volunteer firemen, for our earned income tax. It's a flat rate of $500, correct?
That's correct. The Director of Finance has recommended that the board adopt a $500 tax credit for all volunteer firefighters in the township, and the next item on the agenda establishes the specific criteria which will enable someone to take advantage of that tax credit.
All right, any comments or questions, Mr. Galloway?
No, all good.
Ms. Mullen?
Just to clarify, it's a $500 cap? That's correct. It's up to $500, so if someone only has a tax liability of $400 for the year, they would only receive the tax liability for $400. Thank you. And just to clarify for the minutes, the original version that was advertised does have a percentage of $100, or it has a percentage rather than a flat rate, but after discussion with the Director of Finance, the recommendation is for the flat rate of $500, so we'll make that change accordingly.
All right, Mr. Palmer?
No questions.
All right, I have none. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Item number six is a resolution.
Mr. Dance, I don't believe you took public comment on that last one.
Oh, is there any public comment needed for that one? I apologize. No hands. Item number six is a resolution. I don't have the resolution.
So the resolution, we did work with the Fire Marshal to put this together. It establishes service criteria that any individual would be able to meet in order to qualify for the tax credit that we just established. And Mr. Dipolito is here to answer any specific questions regarding that, but this was based on the average number of calls that are, that occur in the township, and we also wanted to account for volunteer activities, not just calls for services.
So what resolution number would this be?
Except for ordinance?
No, that ordinance was the last one.
2023-47? Resolution 2023-47.
Forty-seven, all right. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Item number seven, consider ratifying change order from Remington and Vernick Engineers for the CM AQ Adaptive Traffic Signal System project.
The board is being asked to consider, excuse me, a change order for design fees, an amount of $50,000 with Remington Vernick to complete the project. It involves the CMAC grant. Recent updates to the standard construction specifications with PennDOT were part of the reason for this change. In addition, the original scope of work did not include environmental permitting, which has now been added in. The total cost of the change is $50,000. This is within the, this is within the limits for our required match.
All right, any questions for Mr. Tequita, Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
Ms. Mullen?
No questions.
Mr. Palmer?
No questions. I have none. Is there any public comment needed? There's no hands. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. Mr. Galloway, can you pull the board?
Yes. Aaron Mullen.
Yes.
John Palmer.
Yes.
Jeff Dance.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Item number eight, consideration of proposal from Lero for the municipal building renovation project for AV services. Mr. Tequita again?
The board is being asked to consider proposal from Lero for the AV, all the AV portions of the new municipal building. The total amount is $345,565.42. This is within the budget that we had for this scope of work.
And this is within the budget?
Correct.
Any questions for Mr. Tequita, Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
Ms. Mullen?
None.
No questions.
I have none. Is there any public comment needed? There's no hands. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. Mr. Galloway, can you pull the board?
Aaron Mullen.
Yes.
John Palmer.
Yes.
Jeff Dance.
Yes.
I vote yes.
Item number nine, consider a stipulation to settle an appeal of East NY Lane versus Bucks County Board of Assessments. Ms. Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. Dance. This is a tax assessment appeal that was filed related to tax parcel 13028075004, which relates to property located at 8 East NY Lane. This would, this has been negotiated by the school district solicitor and would reflect the change in taxes as reflected in the settlement agreement. Essentially, effective January 1st, 2024, for borough and county taxes and July 1st, or sorry, for township and county taxes and July 1st for school district taxes, the property's assessment shall be increased from $64,080 to $804,000, reflecting a fair market value of $12 million for 2024, and this will result in an increase in assessment of $740,000. The property shall remain assessed at $804,000 unless and until there is another successful assessment appeal, a county-wide reassessment, or another change as permissible under applicable law. As we said, this has been negotiated by the school district solicitor, and we have reviewed all of the settlement agreements, and everything is in a form acceptable for the board's consideration this evening.
So it's going from $664,000 to $800,000? That's crazy.
Yes. What property is it? It is 8 NY Lane. Does anybody know what that is? That increased exponentially in value?
Maybe they found gold on it or something like that.
I think it's Britton Industries down there.
Could be, yes.
Somewhere in that area. Any questions from board members, Mr. Galloway?
No.
No?
No question.
I have none. Is there any public comment needed? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Item number 10, consideration of approval of a resolution adopting and submitting a plan revision for new land development to the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection in connection with updating the township's Act 537 Sewage Facilities Plan reflecting the construction of the Pensbury High School campus.
So as the board knows, from time to time, these resolutions come in front of the board related to the township's Act 537 plan. The Act 537 plan is the township's plan for public sewer services throughout the township. This has to do with a project proposed by the school district. The township engineer has worked with the school district engineer to review the proposed plan, and I believe that they are finalizing this resolution for submission to DEP. This does not constitute any kind of land development or other approval. This is just approval of the sewage planning module to go, to be sent to DEP.
All right, any questions from board members, Mr. Galloway?
No.
Ms. Mullen?
No questions.
Mr. Palmer?
Yeah, one question. Is the school district looking for more EDUs, do you know? Or, because I think there's a moratorium in regards to that. I didn't know.
I would defer to the township engineer on the specifics, but these typically come in when there is an increase of capacity proposed, yes.
Okay.
Any public comment needed? None?
Hi, Jamie Lynch with Dewey Engineering, facilities engineer for the school district. To answer your question, Mr. Palmer, yes, there are additional EDUs. The district's been working with Falls Authority and DEP for the better portion of a year on the sewer planning module, and I think we've come to an agreement on that, also at a reduced rate. And as stated, this sets the stage for the last phase of the stadium project to be completed, which is team rooms and restrooms at the stadium. So that plan and the permitting for that would be our next step, but this was obviously the big hurdle that we had to get through, so we appreciate your consideration. Happy to answer any other questions while you have a captive engineer in front of you.
Thanks.
Just if everything goes as planned, when can people expect to use restrooms at the stadium?
The resolution is before the board next, this week, in order to purchase the buildings. They're prefabricated buildings, and so the goal is to have them delivered in July and online for the first home football game.
Thank you.
So if all goes well, that's the plan.
All right. Any other public comment needed?
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Joanna Stier. I'm the current president of the Pensbury School Board, and I just wanted to thank you for considering moving this forward to DEP so that we can continue with the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other hands? No? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And this is 2023-48?
Correct.
All right, motion made in second. Mr. Galloway, is all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Item number 11 is tabled or removed. Item number 12, consideration of proposals from COFCO for additional chairs for the municipal building renovation. $471 is the price, Mr. Tequita? Or $884.60? Any questions from board members, Mr. Galloway?
No, no, no questions.
Mr. Palmer?
No question.
Any public comment needed? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. Can you pull the board, Mr. Galloway?
Aaron Mullen.
Yes.
John Palmer.
Yes.
Jeff Dance.
Yes.
I vote yes.
Item number 13 has been removed. Item number 14, consider settlement stipulation and agreement in zoning appeals of Mercuria versus Falls Township Zoning Hearing Board in Falls Township for tax mat parcel 132402.
Mr. Dance, this represents a settlement of two zoning hearing board matters that were appealed back in 2020. It has to do with properties located at 2224 Falls Tully Town Road. This is a two-unit building which has long existed on the property. The applicant had originally requested relief to operate a medical office on the property to accommodate the practice of evaluation and prescription of medical marijuana cards. No pharmacy, the terms of the settlement are that no pharmaceuticals will be stored on site. The second use in the building remains to be determined, but there have been some permitted uses added into the settlement agreement. It allows certain additional uses beyond the zoning of the property, which is the NCR district. It took some additional uses from the NC Neighborhood Commercial District, which includes small retail, professional offices, bank, and personal services. High-impact uses like breweries and daycares are not permitted. Also contains limits on the hours of operation and the capacity of persons to be in the entire building at any one time. It is restricted from being a medical marijuana dispensary, and a survey was performed to ensure that the parking can be located on the existing parking field without any additional paving or impervious coverage. Our office has negotiated this with the applicant, as well as one of the neighbors who took party status in the appeal, and all parties are in agreement regarding the terms of the settlement.
Any questions from board members, Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
Ms. Mullen?
Just, do these conditions, it will just apply to this applicant? These conditions will run with the property. They live with the property? This will be part of the property file, correct.
It seems like all the parties are okay with this. It's been going on for a long time, so I think we addressed everything, so.
Anything else, Ms. Mullen?
Uh, just number five, Ms. Gallagher. Were these uses that are permitted without this document? No. These, these are the uses that would normally, so the uses that are going to be permitted were pulled from the NC district, and we wanted to make it clear that those uses that are allowed in NC will not be permitted at this property. This property is, it's much closer to residential uses, so we wanted to make sure that those kind of high-impact uses that would normally be allowed in the NC would not be permitted here. Okay. And we can, I guess I'm just surprised we can do that? Yes. We are not rezoning this property. We are settling a zoning appeal. Okay.
All right, I have no questions. Any public comment needed? Mr. Farrer?
My name's John Farrer. I have a few questions on this property here. I guess I got party status on something. I had some problems when she tried to do the medical marijuana card originally. I'm not against pot. It is what it is. I was just concerned that this property, and its location near residential and pot kind of didn't go together. This property's parking lot is a complete disaster, so any high-volume business such as that, because if you can Google medical marijuana cards, one of the things they brag about is you can get out of there in 10 minutes with your card. You're stressed and you're out the door. So that's why I was against it originally. It popped into my radar, so I filed it, filed it on out. Is it clear in this, in this agreement that the medical marijuana card is going to be distributed out of there, out of a medical office? Because you can run under a medical office and still distribute medical marijuana cards. It's not really a doctor's office. It's just a rubber stamp place to get medical marijuana cards. So if you do approve this thing, which I don't have a problem with things going in down there, we just got to bring the property up the code and watch what we put in there. It seems like we're kind of stepping around a zoning change when we're allowing everything but a restaurant and a microbrewery or something like that. We're allowing anything under NC in this property without reviewing it before it goes in. This property isn't set up for a high-volume business. It really isn't. So to blanket it under anything NC when it's NCR, seems like we should just go for a zoning change and call it what it is, a zoning change, not a used variance. Before in there was a tanning salon. That was out of there for years, years and years and years, before some sewing business came in, which I stopped at to see about selling boat seats, and they wouldn't even open the door, and they never left at night, so it was a residence. That was the last actual use, but nothing's been in there for years and years and years because it's not, it's not a, it's not an attractive place. It's not on the beaten track, so you're gonna need, you're gonna need a draw. But I think instead of maybe blanketing this thing as a, anything NC, why don't we just tell them to go back for a zoning change? Or if you want to do a used variance, come in for the used variance for each thing. If it's a tanning salon, come in and say, hey, I want to do a tanning salon. And make sure it fits in that property with the volume that's going to come in and out. You don't want a high-volume thing. want a high-volume thing in that place. We approved the tanning salon years ago without bringing it up the ADA code. We almost approved the beauty salon if I didn't step in. I have pictures of the place. I don't know if you guys even know what it is, but the sidewalk's three feet wide. There is no handicap parking. We have a concept plan that has nothing more than a concept plan. It doesn't meet any code of ADA whatsoever. Once you put the ADA parking where it's at with the, with the line striping, you, you limit the access to even coming into place. It's a hazard. So before we even start talking about letting them do whatever they want in the NC thing, we ought to make sure that we bring it up the code. They show in parking, um, in the parking lot, but behind the building is a road. Um, so if we're going to put parking there without taking the road out, you're going to have people try and go behind the building to come around the other side and knock it out. Once we take that asphalt out, we're starting to hit over the 500 square feet. We got, we got earth disturbance. We're running into land development. We start doing this much stuff, but we have to do this property bringing up the code. Um, I'm not against anything going in down there. I'm just against somebody feeling that their property's been there forever, and they get to do whatever they want with it out while fixing it up. Um, you guys are knocking your building almost down and rebuilding it. Um, we, we knocked a church down and made houses out of it, uh, out of that property. It's still most closing, putting warehouses in. If, if your property comes irrelevant, it's not the township's responsibility to make sure you can do something with it, even, even without bringing it up the code. That's what's going on here, is we don't want to bring it to code. There's, there's, nothing's gone into this place. So I have no problem with you guys saying, hey, you know, let them do something with it. If we're going to blanket the thing to NC, why don't we just call it a zoning change and get it over with? Um, or we do it as, as we should. Each time somebody wants to come into there, come into the zoning board, say, hey, I want to put a tanning salon, I want to put a, an accountant's office, and we go through the motions. But bring it up, bring it up the, the code. If you guys do anything with this thing, I would make sure there's no medical marijuana card going in there. Because if you have two doctors in there, we're going to put, we're going to spit somebody out every 10 minutes. We're talking 12 cars an hour. That's more cars than St. Joe's people are coming in and out of that place with it. We don't need that, and we don't need that much volume of, of resident, in a residence dealing with, with the weed thing. I'm not against the weed. I'm not against anything they're doing. I'm just against what, how they're going about it. So you guys consider what you want to consider. I'm considering, i-if it's zoning, then, then send them back to the zoning. Rezone it. Bring it up the code. Do something with the building that makes it attractive for somebody to come in there. Let's not put a, a business, no matter where you put it and what kind of building you put it in, no matter the condition of the building, people are going to go there because they want their medical marijuana card. And that's kind of what we're doing, is we're attracting a business to a building instead of, because of what they're, what they're doing, um, then attractive building or bringing it up to code. So there's a lot of code issues with that building, um, that the, the concept plan that they sent out is, is, is not even relevant. It is only a concept and all that stuff, but.
Mr. Farrer, if I can just clarify a couple of points, um, this, this settlement agreement only has to do with the use. They're still going to have to comply with all other township ordinances, and we made that clear in this agreement. So if there is an ADA issue or a permitting issue, when, when they go to apply for a use and occupancy permit, they're going to have to go through Mr. Tequita's office, and he's, and a lot of that's going to get flagged. As far as the, the parking, again, that's part of what's being addressed here because there is limited parking on that site. It's one of the reasons that rezoning was not something that the township wanted to do, because there are uses in the NC district that the township was, did not want to permit there. I, you know, when I, when I was referencing the NC district earlier, I just, I, that was just me talking. I was using that as a jumping off point. There are certain uses that would normally be permitted in the NC, which is where, which is listed as permitted here. The only thing that's going to be permitted is going to, by this, by this settlement, is going to be that the medical office that's associated with the medical marijuana prescription. Any other proposed use, they're going to have to submit a letter of intent to Mr. Tequita. He's going to look at it from a zoning perspective to see whether or not it complies with this agreement. And if it does, then he, they would have to still comply with all of those other requirements that the township has in place.
Are we, are we blanketing every, every use under NC except for?
No.
So they have to still come in front of town? And I couldn't hear, it's tough to hear in this place.
There may be, there may be zoning issues.
About the medical ma, what, what, what part of the medical marijuana can they do there? Anything?
It's a, it's an evaluation and prescription of medical marijuana cards.
That's what, you're going to let there?
That's what the, it's a medical office, yes. That's what this agreement would allow.
So she's saying it's a doctor's office. They're not issuing cards there. It's just a doctor's office?
I'm, I'm going to be against that because that's, it's, it's, it's just, it's issuing medical marijuana cards. The, the place, the, the place isn't going to handle the volumes, so.
This is just the prescription office. There would be no dispensary associated with this.
Yeah, I understand that part of it, but that, the dispense, the, the medical marijuana card thing is, is 10 minutes long.
The way that this is set up is it restricts the number of people that would be able to be in that building at any given time. So.
Isn't it by appointment, you said, also?
It's by, it's by appointment only. There's limited hours, and there's going to be, even if there's another use that goes in, so let's say they put, you know, whatever, a yoga studio next door. I don't, I don't even, I'm not sure that that would necessarily be, but they would have to limit that, that 15 people between all the staff and employees for both uses and anyone that's in there. And if the parking lot has any kind of issues with, that, that are out of code compliance, they're going to have to bring that up to code with, through Mr. Tequita's office, no matter what goes in there.
Then, 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 no, I'm not, I'm not for this project. How, how do we get, how do we get around this thing? This, this thing was abandoned. This property was abandoned. It goes back to, to original.
Those are all the issues that are being litigated. The purpose of settlement is because it's not, you know, a judge could, could agree with you, a judge could not agree with you. Um, so the purpose of settlement is to, to settle a dispute. All those arguments that you're raising are things that the township had argued on appeal.
So basically what she's saying, if somebody, this is just for the use. So if somebody says they want to put a, a bank there, then they give it to Mr. Tequita. There's no way that they're going to have enough parking for a bank, or the size of the building. If they were to fit even a barber shop, they're going to have to meet the parking requirements, the ADA compliance, the bathroom, and everything else, correct?
Correct.
And what is this, is this came from a judge, this?
No, this, so there, there's two zoning hearing board matters that were appealed. Um, they are currently pending in front of the court, and this is a settlement to resolve. I believe there's been a couple of conferences with the judge, but there's not, there's not been a decision made yet. So this is just, and again, this is just a settlement and conversations that we've had with the applicant and the, and township staff. And I believe Mr. Farrer has been involved in these conversations, because you are a party to this litigation.
Yeah, and I was totally against this. I thought that was going away. I thought the medical marijuana card thing was going away. A medical marijuana card, you're going to have more turnover there than you are a bank. There's, there's no way this place can handle the volume. It, it makes zero sense to put medical marijuana cards in a residential setting.
The township can't regulate how many times.
And it was already denied, it was already denied because, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but it was denied because it, it, it went, it went dormant. The, the, everything result reverted back.
Well, the township can't regulate the, the turnover with any individual business. So if I go to a business and I park my car there for an hour, or I'm there for five minutes, the township doesn't, doesn't regulate that. What the township regulates is how many people can, and how many cars can be in that parking lot at any one time. And the township's going to regulate whether or not those parking spots are the, the right size, whether they're in the right location, whether the material is correct. But the amount of time an individual vehicle spends in a parking lot is not something the township regulates, or could regulate.
But this thing isn't zoned for that. It's, it's, it's.
And that's why it's on appeal.
So we're, we're changing the zoning of a residential area to allow people to come in and get marijuana cards?
This is zoned NCR, and this is, this is, there, there was non-residential uses historically at the property. And again, we've made the same arguments as far as how long, how long ago those uses are. And, you know, for, for better or for worse, there's, there's, there's open court cases that this is trying to resolve that, to mitigate the risk on both sides.
Why do we have a 12, 12-month rule if you, if you don't do anything with your, with your property reserves? Why do we have that if we're not, if, if we don't follow it?
That is, that is the argument the township was making on appeal.
Because it's been, it was vacant for, for years.
It's been vacant for a long time.
Yeah, so I understand how, how we just come on back, bring the building back, and next throw it the worst use you can possibly throw it in, in the setting and where it's at. Because the overflow is going to park across the street in Moon Drive.
Mr. Dens, if I might suggest, Mr. Savarrez is here tonight. He represents the applicant in both these matters. Mr. Savarrez, if Mr., if Mr. Farrer's not in, I apologize if I just mispronounced your name. If, if he's, he's a party to this, this matter, so I'm not sure.
Good evening. My name's Todd Savarrez. I'm land use counsel for Dr. McCoria, who is also present. I'm a little surprised that Mr. Farrer's here and expressing his concerns because this property and these appeals have been pending for almost four years. This coming February will be four years from the date the first land use appeal was filed. This originates because of constitutional non-conforming property rights, and clearly the whole predicate to the litigation implicates these constitutional principles. We were in court, and Mr. Farrer has been a party to these proceedings for those four years, including represent, being directly and being represented through counsel. He was either present, I know his attorney was present, in March of 2023 at a conference with the court, the Honorable Judge Yeager, who was the individual who analyzed all the briefing. And Ms. Gallagher is correct, there was a ton of briefing, a ton of legal issues, and the judge called us in the chambers and said, you know, you guys should try to get this case resolved. So this, here we are in December. We've been working through Ms. Gallagher's office and Mr. Heleniak, and through your administration for these many months. There was a, a request for a sketch plan to show the parking, which we provided, and then there was a request for a sealed survey plan that was provided in August of this year. So this is not something that, you know, I'm a little surprised that Mr. Farr continues his objections. In fact, I thought Mr., I was under the impression that Mr. Farrer's objections had been adequately addressed in the, in the settlement agreement. So I'm, it's, it's with, it's with the context of these appeals being, dealing with a property that clearly is non-conforming, and the legal principles that implicate non-conforming property rights is what, is what brings us to the board. And, you know, with, I think there's a, you know, an ambition here to avoid the administrative burden every time another user wants to go in there. It's been used as a tanning slo, excuse me, it's been used as a tanning salon. It's been used as a beauty salon. It's been used as an accountant's office, and a photographer's studio, and numerous other uses. The use has always been the issue in these land use appeals. Everything, the building, the parking facilities itself, the setbacks, they're all non-conforming. This building's existed since, I think, 1960, 1960, what, excuse me, 54. So it's an unusual situation, but it, it is these types of unusual situations that, you know, unfortunately spur litigation. And we believe, you know, that certainly Dr. McCoria has, has conceded on many issues. Um, but you have to start from the predicate that, you know, with respect to Mr. Farr, it's not his property. It's private property, and he has private property rights.
But he lives there.
I said with respect to Mr. Farr, it's not his property. He doesn't live on the property.
No. I understand that. I know where he lives, too. He lives right down the street.
Right.
Mr. Savarrez, are, is there any kind of impending deadline from the court, or I'm, I'm wondering if, if continuing this, this discussion to January might make sense. I, I don't know.
Give me one second.
Is that going to change?
Yeah. I, I really, I'm hesitant because, as I said, four years and this property's sat vacant.
My understanding was that all, all three parties were on board with the settlement, but I'm, I'm understanding a little differently.
I had a telephone conference, uh, either late this morning or early this afternoon with Mr. Farrer's counsel. Um, and we added language in the, in settlement agreement that says Dr. McCoria will otherwise comply with all township ordinances and the terms of the municipality's planning code. Um, the document is a collaborative effort, and up until 20 minutes ago, I was under the impression that Mr. Farr was collaborating in that effort. So, you know, if, you know, my, my request of, of the, of the supervisors would be to settle the matter, Mr. Farrer's signature on the document is required, and if Mr. Farr believes that the document somehow doesn't, you know, represent his intentions or his expectations, he can not sign the document, I suppose. I hope that doesn't happen. Um, and then we'll have to get the court back involved. But at this juncture, unless I'm way off the mark, I thought there was a meeting of the minds between the township, the township administration at least, zoning hearing board, certainly Dr. McCoria. And there's, there are protections with regard to the, the parking lot, with regard to the maximum number of occupancy, um, at any given time, the hours of operation, protection, the settlement agreement addresses, you know, no, no noxious operations, no disturbance. Um, you know, I, I think it's a, it's a good work product, and it's one that actually avoids the necessity for either Dr. McCoria or any of her, you know, successors to actually come in and have to, I mean, she's, any user's going to obviously have to come in and make a use, make an application with Mr. Tequita and your administration. Um, but I think that the reason we got here, and the reason we're in for, over four years of litigation, um, you know, is because of the ambiguity surrounding the past uses and what's permitted in the future. And what the parties try to do is come up with uses that are comparable with what historically had been uses, an accountant's office, a lawyer's office, an insurance agency, a beauty salon, those types of service industries. Um, so that we're, we're at least defining to a, to a more exact extent what uses are permitted and what uses absolutely are not. And that was the intent, and I thought that was, you know, what we were, we were, I, I didn't know I was going to have to make a presentation this evening. I, I came in case I had to, and I, and I'm happy to address the board. Um, but I really believe that this is a, it, it's a settlement agreement that, that was entered into over many months, negotiated, and it was done so at the suggestion of Judge Yeager.
So the, the board's options are to either consider the agreement as presented tonight or table it. If there are, if the board does approve it tonight, and there are changes, it would just have to come back in front of the board to approve any changes that are made based on conversations.
If I may, one minute. I, I wasn't, um, this thing's going on four years. At 4:00 on Friday, I got an email that my wife brought me out, that we had a meeting today. Um, so for four years, I wasn't getting much back and forth. Um, so I hadn't been, wasn't given that much time, opportunity. I never reviewed anything. Nothing ever came across my desk.
Well, sir, the township and Mr. Savarrez have been communicating with your attorney. You are represented, and that, that's who the.
Whoever, whoever sent it to my attorney.
Why don't we table this so that you can, Mr. Farrer, because at this point, I'm kind of agreeing with Mr. Farrer. So let him get with his attorney and see what they can work out, and then we'll revisit this.
But I'd like to comment on something he said. He said, we're going with, with historical data of, of a beauty salon, this and that. We, we never mentioned doctors, we never mentioned medical marijuana card because it, it wasn't an existing use. So we're jumping, we're, we're, we're taking a big leap from, from a tanning salon and, and, and an accountant to a medical marijuana rubber stamp and card thing. So it's not a consistent use. It's not a relevant use of what it was in the past.
Before.
But, but I, I kind of got this thrown at me on, on Friday afternoon. Whose fault it is, how my lawyer didn't have it, how I didn't get it, I don't know. Maybe I have bad representation. I asked if he wanted to be here today. He said, I, he wasn't needed. So maybe this is my fault. Um, but I've been, I've been trying to do my due diligence. I originally, and I've always said, the, the medical marijuana thing would be a terrible idea just because of the volume, because of the parking lot, because of this and that. I haven't changed my opinion. I never agreed to this. Nobody ever threw it by me to take a look at it. It's the first I got of it.
And I, I do appreciate you coming here, and you've given us a lot to think about, but am I correct in saying, just because there's talk up here that we might table this, if Mr. and Mrs. Farrer don't sign this agreement, it's null and void? So this is, do, do you understand that?
Yeah.
So, but this.
Would it be nice to have you guys on my side? Because this don't belong there. It doesn't, it really doesn't.
Mr. Farrer, the township has, has taken positions on, on briefs. This is just a potential settlement. So the township has taken the position that, that neither of these applications should be approved, and that has been the township's position consistently throughout this. This was just something, and again, my understanding was that there was conversations with your attorney, and if you need to talk to your attorney, that's fine. Sounds like the board is going to consider pushing this matter until at least January, and so that you have an opportunity to talk to your attorney.
Okay. Appreciate it.
All right. I'm going to ask for a motion to table.
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 14 is gone. Item 15 is escrow releases. I only see one for the Levittown Car Wash, $2,326.43. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Is there a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number 16, appointments to various boards and commissions. I have none.
None.
I don't have any.
Item 17, the minutes from November 27th. Item seventeen, the minutes from November twenty-seventh. Excellent minutes, as always, Mrs. Pullen. I have nothing to change or add.
Motion to accept minutes as written.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You've all seen, I'm not going to put Doug on the spot tonight because Mr. Jones had an emergency with a flooded basement. I mean, so if there's anything that, you had questions on the bill, on the engineer's report? Or do you want him to go through it?
The engineer has a flood in his basement?
Yeah.
I don't know if he would like you saying that. No, I have no question.
Okay. Then we'll just accept it as presented. Thank you. That takes us to the bill list. Any comments or questions on the bill list? Ms. Mullen, Mr. Palmer?
I have none.
I have none.
We have the bill list at $3,096,742.20. That's hard to read. Any comments or questions, or I mean, any, is there a motion? I'm sorry.
Second.
Motion being seconded. Mr. Galloway, can you pull the board?
Aaron Mullen.
Yes.
John Palmer.
Yes.
Jeff Dents.
Yes.
I vote yes.
We have a bill list from Obermeyer, who is our labor attorneys, in the amount of Any questions or comments or board members? Any public comment? Is there a motion to pay that bill?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded.